It's time for 6 o'clock. And I call the meeting of the Howlett Township Student Day to order. Here's your role. Ms. Amati, Ms. Amati Edimel?
She's not here but we heard from her. She's on her way, thank you.
Mr. Devon Campanella?
We have him.
Also a drink.
Mr. Landon Ford?
Here.
Mr. Alexander Madpat?
Here.
Ms. Violet Parker?
Yeah.
Mr. Collins Spire?
Here.
Ms. Veronica Torkowski?
Here.
Ms. Sophia Gal?
Here.
Mr. Henry Kryminski?
Here.
Please rise and move the class.
The gents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Etiquette notices of this meeting were distributed by the secretary on Wednesday, April 18, 2018. It is now time for the board presidents and superintendents' remarks. Mr. President, your remarks.
Thank you. Good evening. During today's Student Board of Education Day, we had a firsthand look at how the Board of Education works and this experience was certainly in my mind. We learned that the Board of Education being in charge is the outgrowth of various work that takes place in various committees. The Board conducted the following committee meetings: Policy, Operations, Education, Advocacy, and Safety. In these meetings, in each of these meetings, topics were discussed that were introduced through the essays that we wrote as a part of the process to participate in the Student Board of Education Day. It was great to see my fellow students having the opportunity to provide input and be given consideration by the actual Board of Education. I'm excited to hear the committee updates from each of our individual chairs. This will provide insight to the public and allow us to operate in transparent manner just like the actual Board of Education. It was also exciting to meet students here from other schools and to have a chance to discuss important topics. I found it interesting that many different opinions had existed among our group. Even more interesting was how we debated topics and were able to come to a consensus as a team. One of my biggest takeaways which I'm sure is shared among our group is that we were at our best when we took a team and approached towards problem solving and offering suggestions and solutions for consideration. I would love to thank everyone for this opportunity and looking forward to a successful meeting at this evening.
Madam Superintendent, your remarks.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's board meeting. You're at our school district today. The Howlett Township Public School took the opportunity to help bring attention to autism awareness by lighting it up blue. We stand united in raising awareness for this worthy cause. Earlier today, I drafted a letter thanking each of our 12 principals for their support of #HowlettLightsItUpBlue and I would take a minute to read this letter. We would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for participating in this year's #HowlettLightsItUpBlue. Be sure to say thank you to the staff and students of your school. It is great to see such excitement from the staff and students toward this very worthwhile cause. It is events such as this that makes us the pride of superintendents in the state of New Jersey. This report comes because the letter was from me and... I would like to point your attention to the Twitter feed that is rolling on the monitor here this evening. In addition to autism awareness and acceptance, we are highlighting the fine work that took slaves that march "Make 'em Madness" and today at our Student Board of Education Day program. I would like to thank my peers at tonight's meeting for working together throughout today's program. Not only was today an opportunity to learn about how our senior administration and school board worked together on behalf of our school district, it also provided an opportunity for fifth grade students from each school to exercise students' voice in the decision-making process. As a token of appreciation, Ms. Osola and I shared a brief story that I would like to share here this evening. Every day, an old man walked on the beach with a pail, picking up the starfish that had been washed into the tide and throwing them back into the sea. One day, a young boy stopped and asked the old man, "Why do you throw the starfish back? It doesn't matter. They will only wash off the shore against the wall." The man picked up the starfish out of his pail, threw it as far as he could into the sea, and replied, "It mattered for that one." You may know that many of our participants this evening were in the starfish in recognition of our school district's commitment to each and every student at that time. As a reminder, I am proud to announce that on May 23rd, the Howlett Township Public School will be participating in paint the town in recognition of brain cancer awareness, breast cancer awareness. Our township government and many of our local businesses will also be participating in this activity. I look forward to hearing from this evening's board on how many items we discussed during today's committee meetings. I would like to once again thank everyone for their hard work in making today a successful experience. This concludes my report.
Mr. President, it's now time for committee briefs. They're listed in your agenda here. First, we'll hear from Policy.
A policy committee meeting was held on April 18, 2018 at approximately 10:15 a.m. The meeting began introducing members of the committee and discussing the official commission of the policy committee. Progress for adapting policies were reviewed. The committee understood that after a policy committee responds to a policy, the whole board must read the policy and approve it during the two meetings in the world for it to be adapted. The committee was asked was shown that all the district's policies can be found on the district website. Committee members chose the policy, heard its review to the legislators, asked questions, certain areas in the board, and the principal description. Next, the committee would give a assessment of evaluation and voting of the this one. The board districts, SAC, and Interpoling, Dr. Stevens and Mr. Waters, the board, our twenty six, reviewed each IDU law with the committee. First, the board explained the definition of bullying by the legal standard, which emphasized that what those people think when they... The members of the committee were given a court to discuss different scenarios and can decide whether they should come to be considered bullying under the law. The committee discussed that in order for any of these things to be approved, HIB, there must be a disagreement or a verbal or physical act and/or... or constant communication, whether it's single demand or students or incidents, that one responsibility is required for was being modified by the committee. This disqualification characteristic, for example, race, religion, gender, mental or physical disability. Two, takes place in a school property and form a school function or a school have all the grounds, school grounds, if it gets carried over to school. Three, disrupts a new lead which disrupts the order of all the operational of the school or the rights of other students to be had. And it was... should you know that actually the effort of this student, fully emotional, harming the students which would be having an effect for stimulating the meeting, the student group of students or CD creates a hostile educational environment where students brought in... students, education, and causing negative or emotional harm. The committee discussed some of the responses that the district takes to act on of HIV and also indicators that one not to consider HIV but still for behaviors that can be addressed by a teacher, principal, or vice principal. The group discussed the having... HIV reporting as well as having... helping students who may have shown poor judgment. This could include counseling to a social skills group, dealing with, discussing how characters can be dealt that can be developed for the use of policy in the representation of the deal of HIV situations and helps to inform the students. The committee also made good use to avoid further content for issues that... the form of track was discussed and being developed. It was good idea to... This is the procedure across the district and we're entitled to this issue. Again, we discussed the importance of control of this question. We have the discussion. The committee realized our district's work helped us run the district as well. Well, when I remember where I was before, it helps the state Board of Education and the Department of... All things similar.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'd just like to point out that Vince filled in and did wonderfully and now Sophie is here so she's going to assume the role of the VA. Vince is going to go back to IT Director.
Now can we hear from Operations?
The committee discussed the issue in the classroom during certain times of the year of the Department of Education. The committee voted to endorse the adult board actions approved the resolution for the proposed ECID financing, which will, among other improvements, be able to provide a conditioning in the classroom so that all schools have an equitable learning environment, which was also placed on the agenda as a motion, resolution, or action this evening. The committee discussed the issue of the unfiltered non-cooled water fountains and the issues it raises would not be professionally difficultly filled water bottles of water quality and the waste of disposable water bottles. After a vote for this to be held, the committee voted to the board administration to continue to pursue sustainable energy and opportunities to provide water stations, places, water fountains, to provide healthy water as well as conservation of water bottles. The committee discussed the proposal to offer free pizza fries encouraged students to buy some back. After much discussion, the committee voted to the administration to explore programs and enhance the pizza through incentive or prices that would return to the best operations committee need to present and discuss their program. The committee discussed an additional item, school bus seatbelt safety that was brought up at the end of the meeting. After this to be held, informed the committee that although under energy law, seatbelts are required to be installed on buses, the laws now require them to be worn. The committee voted to request the board advocacy committee to investigate and advocate for changing the current legislation to mandate the wearing of seatbelts on the school buses along with requiring that the buses be equipped with assistance to inform the driver or require the school official of violations during student transport.
Will the recommendation be on the agenda?
Yes, it's on your agenda this evening.
True. Next, maybe your education.
Enrichment time slash health time. Public speaking, screen free days, clubs, drama class, science, lab class, and two-day specials. The committee discussed various ways in which the above topics can be incorporated into the school schedule. Students would like more choices in topics of interest. Administration will work with the building principals to look into exploring these topics and expanding to fit into junior hour and choice time. Media center books. The committee discussed various ways in order to keep new and interesting materials within the media center. Students donated book swaps, e-books, graphic novels, and rotation of materials between schools were some of the ideas discussed at the meeting. Committee voted yes. Approve a resolution. Approve a resolution to the board for expansion of book swaps, additional graphic novels, and availability of digital books. Standardized test time. The committee agreed to the following points with regards to the standardized testing. Takes time away from instruction, adds stress to the students. Would like to have tests administered every other year. No specific topics on specific days. Committee voted yes. Approve a resolution to the adult board a letter to be written on the student's behalf regarding the impact testing is having on the students, any other issues that may arise. The committee discussed and agreed to have a letter of appreciation sent to both Mr. Harvey and Mrs. Allen for their hard work and diligence in organizing the Student Board of Education Day. Committee voted yes. Approve a resolution to the board the following letter of appreciation on behalf of Mr. Harvey and Mrs. Allen to be placed into their personal files. Mr. Frank will now read the letter of appreciation into the record.
Thank you, Landon. Dear Mr. Harvey and Mrs. Allen, please accept this letter of appreciation which will be placed in your personal file on behalf of the Howlett Township... Thank you. On behalf of the Howlett Township Student Board of Education committee members, we would like to take this opportunity to thank you both for all your hard work and diligence in organizing the day. The Student Board of Education Day ordered students to have a more prominent voice in the curriculum and to take actions on behalf of the board. It also allows to have an expansion of knowledge of all rules by support of the curriculum. The day included opportunities to participate in various committee meetings and make recommendations for the board. Discussions during the day included topics such as plumbing, e-readers in the media center, HIV, seatbelt sensors for buses, air conditioning, better water fountains, statewide testing times. Once again, thank you for giving us this special opportunity. Sincerely, Eric Frank. Now, would you two please come here and take the letters? Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Raul, to move on to safety and advocacy.
The committee discussed the way we conduct the wifi as safety drills are changing in life. The committee voted to the administration and asked the adult board to endorse recommendations to develop a handout to be formed here in the building, aware of what they should do if they're met. A drill is called while they are in the building. The committee discussed the suggestion of improvement to the meeting. The committee asked that the topic be referred to the education committee to evaluate whether the concept has positive educational value prior to deciding anything as the strategy. The committee discussed frequency and length of mandated spiritual reading tasks. The committee asked that the topic placed on the agenda this evening on this discussion item so that the board can discuss the issues. The committee was... many aware of today we might ask of technical matters that the committee voted on to place an agenda item for the board's consideration to recommend to the adult board that the opening of the Howlett Township Board of Education meeting scheduled meeting has been moved away and accepted as a day of this year's course, that it should be recognized at the school level and at the meeting by writing and describing the back of the cover.
Thank you.
Well, maybe I have recess because somebody has to leave early and may have to take a little...
Yes. We will take a tear for recess. Let's get started.
It's now time for public comment. With your permission, decide.
You have it.
Where are the Howlett Student Board of Education left on this comment from the cover? May I have a copy of the open?
Yes.
Are your comments in this time?
Anybody want to ask the board or give them a comment? Anybody?
Mr. Osola, I think we have a... I think we have one, Mr. Osola.
Were there any important factors when you were making the decisions?
Student Board President, you have to decide whether the... For this purpose?
What was the question?
Were there any important factors when you were making your decisions?
We thought about the school and everyone being happy for our decisions so that that could... But I think they were...
One of the examples, who chaired operations of compensation and debate and factors that you looked at for the free pizza fries, right? Could you talk about that maybe?
With the pizza fries, we had to think with how much money and how the money would affect everything else, not just the lunch, how it affects our future and how we would get money for the school.
Anyone else?
Hi there.
Please take your name and address with a record on the show.
I would like to know if you have a better understanding of what happens with the Board of Education after today.
Yeah, we do.
Very much so. Could you elaborate a little bit? Like, what did you learn today that really stands out in your mind? What did you learn today that really stands out in your mind?
That in the Board of Education, you have to use a lot of teamwork and you all have to agree to make something happen.
Lynn?
We also have to think of all the other things that are, that not just focusing on the idea of what, how it affects all the other ideas of the people and how we can combine all the ideas with the people.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You guys talked about a lot of really good ideas that we obviously discussed around the day today. So some of the proposals with regards to the drinking water and potential air conditioning is not great to schools of that nature. Did the Operations Committee also take into consideration what the cost of those things are going to be and what potential benefits you could do to free that cost?
I, we were thinking of putting solar panels on our schools for the electricity so that would help the price with the water systems and the air conditioning so they don't have to run as, so, and then we were also thinking that we're not going to put air conditioning in the gym or the cafeteria because they're too big and we're just going to have air conditioning in the classroom.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. What a wonderful job you've all done. Joey Solow, 200 Squawkum, Yellowwood Road. I stood witness to what was pretty awesome today and I've said that to the audience here this evening, but there's something that does not get drawn out in this setting and in today and I know that Emma and Vince had the opportunity to work with Julianne, myself, as her assistant today, as Superintendent, and Miss Anule and Mr. Wooters, our Board Attorney. We actually had a legitimate legal question arise throughout the day and while protecting confidentiality of the situation, once the adult team spoke about it, we invited Emma and Vince and Julianne into the Superintendent's office and to your office, Madam Superintendent. And we really had some deep dialogue. I don't know if Emma wanted to hear from you because you were pretty articulate today and helpful and maybe Vince, because you don't actually chair a committee in your role as Board Attorney, but I know you played a major role this morning in working through some of that. So if there's anything you can add to that, without getting into the details, always protect confidentiality. I'd love to hear that, if that's okay, Board President.
This one?
I said that we should ask the person who reported it first on why they reported it and why they think they should report it.
Yeah, me and Emma really got to look into a real life case with that and we really had to find out if it was really needed and we needed to find out everything that Mr. Osola and the technology, the technologies do. So it was, it was good to see how that transpires.
Awesome. Thank you, Vince. Thank you, Emma. And I know Julianne, you were pleased to have the Board Attorney on campus today, right? Because you had to have some, we got some free advice today. Thank you, Mr. Wooters. By the way, Mr. Wooters, our Board Attorney volunteers on today and we're very appreciative of that. But I thought that was a really good interaction. Do you agree, Julianne? Or, yeah? It was pretty cool, just like you. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
Mark Funch, Honesdale, Bill Lewitt. I've heard a couple of recommendations come out of the committee meetings that are going to be sent on to the, I guess I'll call it the Adult Board for lack of a better term. Do you see yourselves having been involved in those decisions following up to make sure that the other Board goes along with some of the recommendations that you made? Can you see yourself making follow-up and either coming to Board meetings or looking at agendas to see if some of your proposals were taken up?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Any other comments? Thank none, may the poor people rest.
Yes.
It's now time for discussion. One topic. We're good frequency and length of time devoted on standardized testing.
I'd like to open the floor for discussion. Any comments from the Board?
May I have permission to speak, Board President? Well, everybody kind of thinks that the standardized testing, some people think it's a waste of time only because it gets like, it gets, it brings an anxiety because of standardized testing and if they get it wrong, it's kind of like, it's kind of like, oh no, it's never going to work out. And lots of students find it terrible. I mean, even my teacher calls it the passing of the park. Back to the topic. Would kids kind of just have to realize that there's not much to be worked up about? And, well, anybody else want to lead on to that?
So, yeah, it brings stress to all the students throughout the year and we agree that it should be administered every other year so that kids don't have to stress about it every single year.
Board President? Lynn?
We were also talking about, one of the Board members was talking about how we waste a lot of time just working for the park and how, like, when we get really close to the park, we don't have enough time for anything else but studying for park. And then when we were talking, we were discussing that why can't we just do the Star Assessment Center for the park? And that was big when we were talking because it's like, why do we have to have two different testings while we could only have one testing?
So just to add on to what Devon said, so for example, the park, the park test is four days of math and three days of reading, but we take two weeks before the park test to actually study and get ready for. That's taking three weeks out of curriculum in time that could be learned in some of these stuff.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Sophia?
I was back to what I was about to park. Also, the makeup park seems scary to people. This is a big thing. And I know it is, but it is, but like, they kind of like scares people. Which I, I have like, my neighbors talking about like, oh, this is a big thing, we have to be really ready for this. And it is just like, you're putting it in a way kind of like the kids get scared of it all. But I think that's why everybody's like, why kids get scared.
So in our meeting, we discussed that we think parks should be more like NJ asked, where it's only every four years.
Mr. President? Do we want to make a motion that we limit park testing?
Yes.
We don't have that power.
Shall we return this to our meeting? And Bob, you?
Yes. Want you to take the agenda?
Do you like it even a lot less?
Yes.
No further questions? Could you read the agenda? I think the answer.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I second. Move by that. I second.
Okay, the motion is second.
On the agenda. Please give me a vanilla. Yes, you know.
Each board member will vote yes or no. We're going to vote on everything that we talked about today. I say yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Ralph, may I? May I?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Spires?
Yes.
Mr. Karkaski?
Yes.
Ms. Gallow?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
Agenda, agenda passes. All equal to favor, not opposed.
I open to your turn. We are adjourned.